Good afternoon. Today is Wednesday, July 21st, 2010. This is the Athens City Planning Commission meeting. We have a case for a request for lot split on the cases, and that would involve Mr. Robert Barker. Mr. Barker, did you want to -- oh, first of all, did you want to stand and?
I'm not Robert Barker.
Oh, you're not?
Russell Jayden.
Oh, okay.
Being a leader by David Barker in downtown on the Rosemont Boulevard, what do you say? You can say all this stuff.
Did you want to make comment today?
No, I'm interested to make comments.
Okay. So we're all set then? Okay. Thank you.
Okay. If you make comments, you have to be sworn in, and that's why he's asking.
Let's see. First of all, the lot split itself, Paul, could you give us a -- or John, I'm sorry.
This property is within a three-mile radius of the city limits, and per Athens City Code, 21.03.04, a lot split is required to go to the planning commission if the residual property or the new property, one of them being less than five acres. In this case, the property is nearly 10 acres, but just shy of, and one of the parcels will be about 4.6 acres, the other will be about 5.3. Therefore, it would be required to come here for the parcel that is 4.6 acres. The property has been through the health department. Chuck Hammer has signed off on the septic situation or septic approval if it needed to have that. With the depth ratio was okay. Engineer signed off. My office had no issues with it. Moore did. Paul with the city planner, and the engineering and public works did not have to review it since it is outside the three mile. So it's pretty simple, but still had no required to come here.
Are there any questions, Mayor?
Okay, so the total amount's actually a little -- okay, 9.8, so no matter how you cut, you'd still be under 5.
Right. And if both parcels were over five, it wouldn't even happen to be here. And I did speak with Bob Eisenberg as well, and he didn't have any problems with it either.
Okay. And I just have to assume the frontage is adequate there. There used to be some kind of -- wasn't there some kind of stipulation about the?
It's one to three. One to three, and the five-acre parcel is not required to meet the one to three since it is over five acres.
Okay, I see.
And the other parcel is under five acres, but it does meet the one to three. So it's okay.
Okay. That's -- you anticipated my question. And again, we're not hearing anything from the health department in terms of septic like that.
No. Mr. Hammer signed off on it.
I have a question. This survey is from 2004. Has this just been kind of sitting on the shelf since then?
Yeah. That's what he said, that they had it originally done, and apparently at one time, one of the neighbors wasn't real keen on it, but they've since worked out an agreement, and now she is, and everything's okay.
Harry, did you have any questions?
Nope.
Mayor?
Okay. So looking at the reproduction of the map, it looks like there is -- are there buildings on this right now? The -- I think there is. I think it looks like there's one in there, but I'm --
My understanding, and maybe Mr. Chandler can explain, there's a house on the 4.5-acre parcel that the applicant currently lives in, and he's actually got a contract to sell that, and that he's wishing to get a future build on the 5.2-acre lot right next door for himself.
Okay. That's all I wanted to know.
Are there any questions from the commissioners? I'll take the motion that we accept the lot split as presented for $68.95. It's a second. Call in favor.
Aye.
We're all set. Thank you. Moving along. We're into communications. And let's see. Paul, did you want to bring up the latest issue in regards to chickens in Athens?
Sure. Monday evening in the city council, the planning and development committee, Chris Ball and Ken Butler, are going to be sending a formal request to the planning commission to review -- I forget the section of code, of our zoning code in relation to keeping of chickens. I don't believe that formal request has arrived yet. It's 2304-01B. I don't believe that request has officially arrived yet, but they have been talking about it at council for about three weeks now, and since it's coming our way, it's probably something that the planning commission should start to focus on during meetings and after meetings. There's a -- I believe what they're wanting to do is reduce the lot line requirement for the keeping of chickens, which right now is at 100 feet, down to 25 feet or 10 feet, et cetera. That would probably be one of the recommendations they'd be looking at, guidance from the planning commission as to what's a reasonable distance, if any, if the planning commission thinks it's reasonable to change it. And also, a discussion of how many chickens would be permitted in the city of Athens, et cetera.
Are there any concerns from your standpoint in terms of allowing?
Personally, as a planner, I believe that there is a reasonable -- we can reasonably have chickens in the city of Athens if the community wants chickens. It does make sense to me from a food security sense and those issues, sustainability, that a lot of people in Athens are interested in. As a dog owner, I probably would never have chickens. I'm indifferent to it otherwise. I don't -- there are things, if we're going to permit chickens, and the city council wants to have them, and they're willing to adopt it, I think it's important that we make -- we craft an ordinance that is as reasonable as possible, that also provides for the health issues of the chickens, nuisance issues, and things like that.
I'm not familiar with the term chicken tractor.
I'm not either.
Well, that's the one that I basically --
Sounds like a ZZ Top song. I don't know.
Right. Actually, it's a portable chicken coop. The term also I've seen is chicken ark. There's actually a couple websites you could look at. One would be urbanchicken.com. Another one would be citychicken. Kent Butler sent me a report from Missoula, someplace, I forget where it was, where they talked about different chicken laws. They did a basically legislation within and out of the city. There's a couple sites that give you a rundown of every state, pro and con. In other words, some places just say no chickens whatsoever. If you look at -- we had -- I had Charlene make a copy of a couple things there, one being the minutes from the special session in January 25th, where we talked about caged birds to elucidate the fact that we weren't talking about chickens at the time. But the second one is the honor, I would say, draft, because it's not -- I don't think it's been approved of, the minutes from the planning and development committee of July 12th of 2010. Now, I'll point out to page two on this, on that particular section, top page, where some of the conditions that Kent Butler alluded to would be limit the number of hens per home to four, no roosters, registration process, an educational handout, change of setback from 10 to 10 feet from property line to nearest residence, restriction from front yards, not for commercial use, and revisited legislation within one year, and chicken odor must not be acceptable by the property boundary. He pulled a lot of this out from, I think he says, Ann Arbor and Burlington, Vermont. If there is the section, I was -- the pieces of information I was looking, which was from -- let's see if I can find it real quick here here. Urbanchicken.org, I believe it is. No, citychicken, sorry, citychicken, talks about, there's a whole variation of how far to have it from the lot lines. You can go anywhere from 100 to down to 10, but most of them are greater than 10, 20 feet, 15 feet, 40 feet from lot lines. The other piece of information coming from Kent, who was talking about the difference between there to the next building over. In other words, not so much a lot line, but a building. And I have a little bit of problem with that, because really, that opens it up. You know, at that point, you'd say, okay, my neighbor has his house all the way on the far side of his lot, and therefore I can put my chicken tractor or ark or coop all the way to my lot line. And that could, you know, which almost means that if they want something built closer, they'd have to change the conditions on that. And we use lot line as the measurement within the city as it stands now.
What would be the purpose of the tractor, though?
Tractor is the idea is that you move it around. The concept there is that you don't really create too much waste in one particular place. The concept is you have a chicken, several chickens in it, and you move it in one part of your lawn. They pick out the lawn, the waste goes to a certain density, and then you move it again. So the idea is they have fresh bugs, new ground, so you don't have to worry about chicken waste. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. One of the issues, of course, is when you look at the setback there, if you read the testimony in this, the minutes from the 12th, some people say, we don't have even the room to put, you know, we'd like to get rid of that setback entirely, because we don't have the room. But again, this is a case where you're trying to make it so it fits everybody, but the law never really fits everybody all the time. There will be cases where somebody can't have it. I mean, technically, you're allowed to have chickens right now if you had a big enough lot, period. I think Paul would point out the fact that there's no limit on how many chickens you can have in any particular lot, if you had a 100-foot setback on each part of your chicken coop. You could make a chicken skyscraper, I guess, and just hang it all the way up to the five. I guess there's a limit on accessory buildings, isn't there, two stories? So you can have two stories of chicken coop and as many chickens as you can fit in there.
What about people who live in multiple-unit housing?
That was actually --
Something to discuss, yeah.
That was actually brought up, I think.
I would presume, well, for one, it's -- rental units are going to be governed by the landlord, first of all. It's going to also be a -- have some control or influence over whether they're permitted in his or her property anyway. But there's things, you, yeah, if we've got a three or four-unit building, what if it doesn't even have a backyard with green space on it? Do we want chickens clucking around on driveways?
Well, if one person does want to have them, and the other people don't, then it's just a vote, or they have the right to do it?
And under Ohio Tenet Landlord Law, I mean, would their lease prevail over the city regulations? I would assume it would.
Yeah. deed restrictions and a lease would override.
There's landlords today that don't allow cats and dogs and fish and things like that as well, so they don't want chickens or birds of any nature, so they can prevent that.
As long as it's stricter.
Right.
Not less strict.
What concerns protecting the chicken in a college town where people might use chickens for fraternity purposes, let's say, or something of that nature? What type of protection exists for chickens there?
That's a good question as well.
I can see a lot of chicken atrocities.
Chicken atrocities, okay. That's a good question. I know we have some ordinances in the city code about dogs and cats and actually abuse to animals, but I don't not know.
Well, unfortunately, even in the state of Ohio, I believe the abuse of an animal's only a misdemeanor. Sadly enough, it's one of the few states where it's not a major crime to abuse an animal. So I would, my impression of the folks who've spoken on behalf of chickens in Athens is that they are responsible people. So from what I've seen from just the people, I don't think that there's an issue of abuse with those folks. Now, if somebody wants to, says, oh, we can have chickens in Athens, I suppose a person in a fraternity or in any type of a party atmosphere who would like to abuse a chicken, that person would probably do that, whether it was permitted or not in the city of Athens.
Yeah, I'm certain that the people who come and talk with you about it are going to say that they are going to take really good care of the chickens and whatnot. It's the other people that, you know, are off the radar who would still have access to being able to do this.
Again, I think number three, bold number three on that page, registration process, I think it would be necessary to register the chickens in town, mostly because then you'd be able to keep track of who has chickens, who doesn't. I think the Wisconsin, Madison, Wisconsin site, which is called Mad City Chicken or something like that, madcitychickens.com, talks about a violation protocol. In other words, if you have three violations, complaint, odor, noise, et cetera, within so many months, six months, basically gets the permit revoked. So there would be a mechanism actually to deal with it as well, if somebody was having problems with chickens. Because in theory, you could say, yes, a lot of people would like to keep the chickens, but if somebody doesn't keep the chickens well, and we've, you know, we've seen it as well, the spectrum of dogs, a dog is tied up on a chain or whatever. And this is my concern, is that we really don't have an animal control officer mechanism within the city.
Would it be animal control, or would it fall under health?
Eventually, it would fall under health, if we got to have three just enough. But at the same time, how bad do you want it to get before, you know, you get, say, over there? And again, to my mind, we, you know, we really don't have a great mechanism for dealing with errant dogs or cats, most less to head chickens. But that's just my personal view on this. This is probably more time than we want to spend on it at this point. It's an evolving situation. I brought it to the head by having John start looking at violations that are in the city right now.
I'll add two points I wanted to bring up to think about. One, the chicken tractor, being that it's movable and having a setback regulation, does make it awful hard to enforce. By the time we get a phone call, we can go out there and it can be moved, and then therefore it's in compliance.
I was going to ask if the chicken tractor was more of an end run around any type of city regulations than it was in terms of?
My next question is, with the stuff, I haven't read the literature, but the setbacks are established. Is that meaning that maybe there's a pen within that area, so therefore the chickens themselves are 10 feet away from the property line? Not just the coop, but the actual fenced-in area that contains the chickens? And therefore, that's where I think the setbacks are coming from. Because the coop being in the middle of a 100-foot lot, but allowing the chickens still go to the property line still is an issue. So I don't know. I haven't read that stuff, but that's kind of what I'm hearing, that that's giving you a defined area within a yard that has to be fenced in itself to contain the chickens, including the tractor.
John or Paul, has anybody, any residents commented about this in terms of property value?
I got a call.
I haven't heard in relation to property values, but I've certainly had people told me that they are not in support of chickens in the neighborhoods.
I would say if the mayor's office were receiving the negative calls, I've had at least five different longtime residents who said, you know, I moved into the city, I don't want chickens. So I'm encouraging residents in support and against to get vocal.
Property values in Athens are pretty stable and doing pretty well as a general rule of policy.
Fighting cocks prohibited away from other law, for conservative reasons.
Game cocks?
The game cocks, yeah.
I believe in Ohio, game cocks are still legal and that, like, to have them, it's not illegal to fight them, but I believe that's actually a misdemeanor too in Ohio. That's, Ohio's a hotbed of game cock fighting, actually. It's known for that, and they, I had, there was some cockfighting going on in my house in Columbus about five blocks away from it three years ago, and there was a huge raid, and there was people from 13 different states in this guy's basement gambling on it. So although, I believe those are roosters, though, aren't they?
Yeah.
It's presumable that roosters would not be permitted in the city of Athens, period. I thought, that seems common sense to me, you know, my alarm goes off early enough, I don't want to hear a rooster waking me up too early. But yeah, I think that there's another issue I had thought about, was is this going to encourage other wildlife to come into the city hunting for food? There's certainly, there's bobcats in the, back in Athens County now, there's also foxes.
Foxes, mongooses.
All of them. Yeah. And also, what do you do when a chicken no longer lays eggs? Is there a way to control? If we limit it to four chickens, and the people want chickens because they produce eggs for them, what happens if, when one of the chickens stops? Do we allow them to get a fifth and have four producing and one?
Yeah.
Yeah. One that you put out in the pasture or?
One of the points that was discussed at the committee meeting was no slaughter of chickens within the city, which is why Paul brings that up. And I did get a call, somebody saying, you know, I've put so much money in my house, and I've got chicken coops in the neighborhood, and what does that, how will that affect? His concern is how it will affect his property values at that point.
Does the idea of the sustainability aspect, do proponents of sustainability within an urban area also endorse, you know, the raising of other animals? I mean, if you open up to chickens, why can't I bring in a cow?
Or a goat.
If I really want to push the sustainability thing?
Well, it may come to that.
Man does not move by egg.
I've seen on the, I've seen on the internet, there's a movement towards the keeping of rabbits for slaughter, because rabbits are extremely, are lean meat. They have a lot of meat, they're easy to raise, they raise quick. I mean, I've seen that stuff, so it may come to that. People are going to want to have goats and make the farm the city and the city the farm.
Well, we wanted to open this up, or make this available as discussion for the community, so we've achieved our purpose there. So what I would recommend, then, is call city hall, talk with your councilperson, and let them know what you think about the chicken issue here, so. And then otherwise, we're waiting for a letter from city council to pursue formally.
I believe what Ohio Revised Code states is that the planning commission must have at least 30 days with which to review a request for a code change, and so within that 30 days, planning commission, at a minimum. So if you want, if you need longer than that, you can take as long as you may need, but I believe it's, so if you need to do studies or field research or anything like that, you've got at least 30 days with which to do it. City council is adjourned until September.
Thanks, Paul. Anything else anybody would like to add here? We're moving on. Let's see. Further communications regarding the comprehensive plan review and advisory commission report. Paul, can I jump ahead as far as, like, you had some information regarding the telecommunications aspect?
Yeah, I don't have anything to report on that first bullet there, the review and advisory commission report. So, but yeah, you can, you guys can go in anywhere you want.
Do you know if that's online right now?
The advisory report?
Yes.
It should be, yeah. It is, I know that.
Did, Mayor, did you want to get into the comprehensive plan review a little bit, or just defer until Nicholas comes back in?
Yeah, let's wait. I haven't read all of it today, truth, and I've been remiss in.
And Harry probably has.
Just going to.
There you go. Last week's packet, so we'll keep busy.
So we'll bump that to a future date?
Okay.
Okay. Let's see. Report from the city planner.
Is there anything else you want to cover in the communications, I guess?
I do have a few additional pieces of information relating to what I talked about last, or two weeks ago, which was the lot coverage requirements of the telecommunications facilities, just additional information to provide you with. I don't know how much you guys want to go into with this stuff, but I did put together a packet relating to telecommunications towers, some additional reordnances in there that are in best practices, that were recommended to me within the state of Ohio. And then the first, the first document there is a model ordinance that was included in the large book, the 21st Century Land Development Code, which was issued by the American Planning Association. It's a composite of best practices and recommendations for zoning codes and development codes. So that is their recommendation for telecommunications or wireless communications facilities. And then the other three, like I said, are, were recommended to me as best practices in the state of Ohio. To get those, I had sent out an email to a list to serve of probably about 600 or 700 people, maybe more, in the state of Ohio who are planners and landscape architects, et cetera, who work on planning issues, and asked who knew what was going on in relation to telecommunications acts within the state. So all three of those, Maria, Springborough, and Rooster, I believe are adopted ordinances and are compliant with the state of Ohio, so.
Okay. Looks like you gave some literature here.
Yeah.
Looking at the material from the Pogarmire Comprehensive Plan, which you gave us last week, as I said, last time, some of the things I like and didn't like about it, in one sense, was I'm aware of the fact co-location is a important point there. The other one I was interested, of course, is that the restrictions in terms of where it could be put in. I guess it's 6.6-18, where it says telecommunications may only be permitted on conditional use in industrial park development areas, and wireless telecommunication towers not permitted in any other zoning district in the city. I see the one section you just gave us now has a little bit more leeway in that in terms of zoning districts than at least the 21st century piece you just gave us, page two. So I guess that would be very restricted. Would you anticipate the concept of actually, if something like that were to come through, would it require variance or something, or if somebody wanted to put a telecommunications tower up in any place besides an industrial zone?
Probably would. I'm leaning at the second one, too, where installation of wireless telecommunications and expansion of existing equipment shelters, such as antenna, may be permitted as conditional use on existing wireless telecommunications tower. And I guess that, I get quite a few requests of changing out the antenna on the existing towers, whether that would be permissible or if that goes through the BZA as well. It's an existing tower, and the antennas weren't any taller. Because of technology, they're changing them out quite frequently. I don't know if that's a BZA situation unless they're requesting to go higher. And that was in, oh, this one, C, C I, whatever, I'm looking at here. 1207.15.
Yeah, it's on page 618. Is that the same section where I was looking?
I don't know if I have it.
At the bottom?
No.
Yeah, 618, yes. Nobody sees it.
No, I was doing the same thing, John, last. C I 122.
Okay. Yeah. C 618, number two there. Okay. And I realized when we were doing the Roosevelt, co-location was almost a chore in itself, because every, the way it's, as it is now, every tower has to be redesigned when you add something else. I mean, you can overbuild it by a certain percentage, but it almost has to be restudied every time you add something new to it.
To my knowledge, each time they do that, they have to get state permit. So even to change out the antennas that are on the existing towers, they have to get a state permit. So I think that would take into account of the design of the actual tower itself.
Do you know how many towers there are in and around Athens, or within, like, the three-mile radius?
I don't know. There's several within a three-mile radius, so within the city, I mean, we've got the Roosevelt Tower, which is for city communications, for safety. There's the one by the Holiday Inn Express, which is a flagpole, which recommended, and all of these are the best practice for a way to disguise.
Is there one up by Monticello Village?
Yeah, that one went to the BZA.
Yeah, there's one up on Piggery Lane, up at the ridges.
Is that the one on Blackberry? There's one on Blackberry.
I think the one on Blackberry may actually be outside the city limits, but I'm not sure.
Yeah, there's a few that are outside the city limits as well.
They went through the BZA.
That must be it, though.
Yeah, no, the one on Blackberry went through the BZA.
Mary? And you've got one on Currie.
Yeah. Yeah.
You can spit at it when you have your car.
The one on Blackberry is in the city limits, because there was a BZA case on it.
Okay.
And I have a request on my desk right now, actually, to change the antennas on that one. Perfect example of why we need something.
Isn't there one off of Columbia, too? Do you, the cemetery up there? No?
You're not thinking of the Pet Ridge?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. I think that's outside the cemetery. Again, what's in the tree?
We have quite a few outside the city limits, so I know when the Monticello Village one went up, I spent some time looking at the towers, and most of them are actually just outside the city limits. There's one off of, was it Longview Heights area? That's fairly large. I remember a couple of years ago, back, members of that neighborhood came to city council because they'd swapped out the lights, and they had the light timing bad, so it was real bright at night and real dark during the day, and they just had to change the timing on.
What I'm seeing in these models and the recommended best practices are that they, you take a real careful look at the lighting, the screening, all of those issues are addressed in here, most of them. The only lighting that's ever allowed is lighting that's required by the FAA. If the FAA doesn't require it, you're not putting it up, screening, so that at least at ground level, it's landscaping, it's got a setback, it's got adequate access for emergency vehicles to get around the building, to round the tower, and that has security, so people can't climb up the tower, six-foot privacy fences and those types of things.
Yeah.
can't climb up the tower, six-foot privacy fences and those types of things, so.
Yeah. And we do, of course, have the Horizon Verizon on our parking garage, which is technically the tower.
Correct.
And one of each. So we've got something to look at. Thanks.
I have to agree, we really, I mean, I'd like to push something forward. I owe it to the Roosevelt residence as it is, and, you know, who puts, there's nothing really right now to keep somebody else's roof on top of their structure or what have you got, except for loading. Paul, in this original one from Pogomire, it also, they also identify historic districts, and so I didn't know if that's in the other, this new regulation.
Yeah, I've seen that in a few of them, that if, to try to discourage or prevent them from happening in your historic districts. Anything that's going to compromise the character integrity of the historic district should be looked at very closely, of course. One of the things I really liked, and I don't recall which one, was that there's a requirement that while it's being under review, that the applicant basically fly a balloon, a tethered balloon, at the peak, at the height that the tower would be, and leave that up there for 24 hours or 48 hours, so that anybody in the city can see basically how their view is going to be impacted by that tower, so they can tell how high it is and where you can see it in the city and where you cannot see it, to try to dis- I know when we went through the Roosevelt issue, there's some of the folks were saying that, you know, the tower would be visible from Court Street. I don't believe that it is, but that was one of the arguments, and so it's good to, it's a best practice that we can tell, is it, are you going to be able to see this thing from everywhere in the city, and is that what is wanted, or is it something that's going to be relatively concealed? Or is it going to have a flag attached to it or something else like that, which would make it more palatable to people?
So you're saying, really putting something like that in there for visualization purposes, so people know?
Yeah, I think that would help, get people to know where it is and get good feedback on it.
As long as it's not a windy day.
As long as it's not a windy day, yeah.
As long as what? Windy day.
Yeah. And I think the reality is that, you know, most people now have cell phones and rely on them for everything, and so we do need cellphone communications, and it does have an impact on people. I know people look at that when they're, you know, if they're shopping for a home or something like that, especially out in the county, they're going to take out their phone and see if they even can get reception out there, and that may have an impact on whether they choose to buy it or not. So people need cell phones, and we need cellphone towers. So let's, if we're going to have them, let's make it as useful and the best we can have.
Any other questions? Paul, anything else from you, or?
I don't know.
Okay. John, did you have anything to report?
No.
Okay. Let's see, there are no-
No citizens.
No citizens here to speak, so any announcements or other business, Mayor?
Yes. Wednesday, August 4th, is Safety Day for the city of Athens. It's our annual Safety Day, so the city offices will be closed. So what she's put down here is that we would not meet until, it will be the third Wednesday, August 4th.
And for the record, I see that John handed us a example of what 60, 60% lot coverage is. Is that what we're looking at, that handout? I just passed it out to Paul.
Yeah, that was actually just an, I apologize, I forgot to cover that.
Okay.
That's just an example of how it can be monitored, how it could be submitted to the city if we wanted to have lot coverage requirements.
Okay.
So that when there's a question as to what the lot coverage is, we do have some good documentation of it that we can keep in our files and for public access.
I just wondered.
It's also something that the applicant, even a residential homeowner, we could devise a system to make it simple for the person who's not a professional architect, to be able to calculate that information.
And you had provided just a recommendation, July 7th, to change that section of code.
Correct. Which is 60% lot coverage.
Yeah. Came this one here from last. Along with example of the table label control.
Which would be? Would you feel that that's such a change, that we would have to hold a hearing on the change in lot coverage at this level?
Yeah, absolutely, definitely.
And the bicycle parking spaces, do you want to go into that? No, we're good to go.
I didn't have anything additional to add on that, but the planning commission would like to discuss it.
I looked at the bike plan, which of course is on the website as well, I think, let's see if I can find it here. I think we're talking about pages 79 to, I think, 84, I believe, or so, of bike parking. And as well as on page 45 and 44, there's proposed biking, parking facilities map, and on page 45, there's examples of bike parking that were given. So for reference purposes, these are things to look at in our bike pit plan, just for public's sake.
That, too, would probably require a public hearing, but-
The recommendations I found rather steep in terms of providing bicycle parking.
I don't think Paul said he was married to them, right? I mean, they could be flexible, right?
This came from the plan.
Everything's always subject to discussion, absolutely.
Any further discussion on that? So our next meeting is August 18th at noon here at City Hall, and dispositions of the last meeting's minutes. Any questions or concerns?
Looked after to me. I moved that we accept the minutes from July 7th.
So second?
Second.
Paul in favor?
I'm abstaining, since it's all over here.
You missed a lot, huh?
Let's see, make a move to adjourn?
Say a move.
Adjourn.
Thank you, everybody.